Call the meeting order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we'll just have to shoot it. We'll get another car now to stop.
Taking my ill-fitting jacket off, I hope that's just the tone for tonight.
Roll up your sleeves.
Yeah. So, a couple announcements to lead off. Well, actually, before we get to the announcements, I just want to congratulate Connie on a very successful event. She's kind of exhausted, so she told me we only have till 7:30.
Right, I got my sore throat spray here.
The Village of Irvington was crawling with people yesterday. I didn't mean that in a good way. It was tough to park, but that was, I always think that's a good time. People seem to be having a good time and, you know, I did, we only got one complaint, very minor.
Well, it's not, it's hardly about me, but it's a lot about...
Well, the complaint was not about you.
No, 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 I mean, it was. Yeah, yeah, I got it. No, so many people did so much. So, I sent a letter into the enterprise trying to name everybody who helped, but, you know, they only allow 400 words, so I don't think I got everybody in, so.
Thank you all.
Anyway, thank you all for helping and coming.
So, next year, same, same thing? First announcement is a public hearing to consider a local law amending the Village Code to provide that appeals from the Architecture Review Board decisions are to be made to the Board of Trustees, and that's scheduled for July 17th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in Village Hall. Did you want to give a quick?
Just real quickly, right now, all appeals, no, under this law, all appeals from the AIB would go to the Board of Trustees. Currently, only appeals regarding demolition in a historic district go to the Board of Trustees. All other appeals from the AIB go to the ZBA. And so, this local law amends up the AIB chapter and the zoning chapter to say that all AIB will go to the Board of Trustees.
Great, and I know that Chairman Bruce Clark, who was of the ZBA, was very, was in favor and kind of his suggestion to keep it consistent, but I thought maybe, Larry, as a follow-up, we could just maybe alert the rest of the ZBA that that's the case, in case they have any comments or questions about it. Have to imagine a little less work is not going to be a bad thing for them.
Yeah, one thing I should say is, is that there are very few, historically, there have been very, very few appeals from the AIB to the ZBA, so it shouldn't, well, it's not going to be a lot less work for the ZBA, it's not going to be a lot more work for you. Things won't change too much.
Excellent, but I'll make a motion for the public hearing. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next is, I'm happy to announce, the fireworks will be on July 4th, 2017, in Matheson Park. As I say every year, they start when it gets dark. We usually now call the police department incessantly and ask them what time the fireworks start. It's dark, 8:30 and 9:00 PM, but I will keep saying that. But again, fireworks at dark, it's very common sense.
And I have two things.
And I have one other going rogue here. We have a dual signature check that we just found out about before the meeting, which is for a payment for, related to the town hall project. That's for $102,315, so I'll be happy to sign that as well as Brenda. And I thought that might be a nice segue for Larry to say, we're getting close to the end, which is a good thing.
So, yeah, the contractor is, now that they've gotten up to full speed, making progress again. The, there are a few elements remaining. The main element is the reconstruction of the columns in the front of the building with a terracotta. There are storm windows that need to be installed, those are on their way in by the end. If everything breaks correctly, we should have a completed project by the end of the summer, so that's, that's what we've been told, so.
Excellent. Mark, you had something related to this?
Two things. I just want to thank you for officiating over giving out the awards to the winners of the second annual...
I was very impressed, by the way.
PSA video contest, sorry, I had to finish the phrase. Yes, the entries are great, the entries are online on the Facebook page, Slow Down Irvington, and they're, last year's entries are well, as well. If you go to the video section, it's very clear what you're looking at. And anyways, the other thing I wanted to mention, because I'm not sure what happened with it, but there's something coming, that the, I think, coming up on Thursday, June 29th, at the Warner Library in Tarrytown, a panel discussion on carbon tax. And this is, features a number of speakers who are involved with the notion of carbon tax and effects on the economy, that's going to be, I think, a little bit wider than just Westchester, but New York State and some of the discussions about what might be going on in terms of a potential for a carbon tax in New York State as a way to help manage some of the greenhouse gas situation. So, it's Thursday, June 29th, at 7:00 PM at the Warner Library in Tarrytown. There doesn't appear to be any RSVP, it looks like you can just go, and my understanding is that it's being supported or sponsored by a bunch of different groups, sustainability groups in our area, in the River towns, and I think our policy task force is also going to be supporting this, so.
Excellent. Anybody else? Well, as we had a lot of correspondence, a lot of it was related to leaf blowers, so I'm going to hold that over to the leaf blower section of the, of the meeting, but we had a couple non-leaf blower-related. The first is from Charles Goldman. "As we discussed Tuesday, the manager of Yoga Works, of which I'm a member, informed me she's considering moving because of difficult parking situation around the center. Too many people come down to the center, can't find a spot, turn back. First of all, she said she will try changing some of the times of the early yoga classes that start at 9:30 AM to 9:15 AM and hope that more spots will be available. As a longtime Irvington resident and yoga devotee, I would hate to lose Yoga Works, both for myself and the village. It's a draw to the village, bringing both members and staff from all over and bolstering our economy and Irvington's appeal. It's like having a movie theater without some of the headaches of having a movie theater with the small popcorn on it. I suggest that perhaps once the term is over for the permit parking adjacent north of Department of Public Works parking, they can be converted from permit parking to general parking with one important provision, restricted to two-hour parking, thus making it unsuitable for commuters who have spots, albeit limited elsewhere. I know we all want to do what's best for Irvington, hope the board consider taking a few spots, I don't believe there are more than 10 or so, and freeing them for general use. Hope you're just making these spots available if it is a difficult situation." Thanks for your consideration, Charles Goldman. Thank you for that. So, something to look at. The next one's from Michael Bradley about Irvington street signs. "Recently, I noticed that some of the standard Irvington street signs, white letters on a blue background, have been replaced with what appear to be standard anywhere in the USA signs, white letters on a green background," using test photos. "As I believe, as I believe that the green signs are considerably less attractive and lookative of a village than our Irvington blue ones, I asked Greg Nielsen about this, and he responded that the new signs were purchased from or provided by the town of Greenberg and that there are federal and state DOT regulations requiring that newly installed street signs have larger-sized letters and other features. Louder Shaffer confirmed that the Federal Highway Administration, manual and uniform traffic control devices, controls what signs can look like and appears that our older signs do not conform, whatever that means. However, it also appears that the new signs also do not conform in at least one way, and that the street signs are now supposed to use lowercase letter after the first letter, which our newer ones do not. It is not clear if the new green signs are the correct font. The M-U-C-T appears to allow blue background signs, and my guess is that the blue is paler than Irvington's. Feels as though Irvington has stumbled forward on a significant urban design decision without researching and considering the alternatives. It's unclear what the consequences of leaving up the existing signs are or what alternatives to the ban on green ones may be, the additional cost of purchasing one of those alternatives might be. I firmly support a modest additional expenditure on street signs appropriate to Irvington's character if necessary. This is being discussed in Irvington's suspended replacement of existing signs." And that's from Michael Breilhahn, Tony Station Road.
Brian, could you make an announcement now about the, the...
Vote?
The vote, because it seems appropriate to that.
Sure. As part of the wayfinding sign initiative to help people find their way around Irvington, there is actually an online petition, or petition is a vote, I guess, survey, where you can state your preference if the sign should be green or if the sign should be blue. So, they're posted there, you can look at them and let your opinion be shared.
Pretty pictures.
There's lots of pictures, yes. So, we, no matter, I'll probably send around, I'll send around an email, I think we sent the email already. I'm going to send one from, from the mayor's desk as well.
How long is that survey open for?
Two years. We don't want to rush it in.
It's going to be a little speed.
Depends when we want to sell the signs. Yeah, exactly, depends on who's winning. There's a big contest on the board. We might cut it off right away with three votes, depends on how we're doing. But no, it's going to be open, I would assume, probably through the end of July or something like that. There's no state law regulation to that, believe it or not. The next one is from Daniel Greenberg. "Our neighbor Cheryl Brandywan has recently emailed you and copied you better concerns regarding the bulldozing soil sampling related work being undertaken by Astro Buck Partners on their property to the north of and adjacent to our home. We are concerned about this work, especially since the 20-foot gas easement area adjacent to our property is specifically designated as a no-construction allowed area. The gas line which provides service to Hudson View apartment mixed-use building directly behind our home travels under that swath of land. Any construction risks rupturing the gas line and creating a fire explosion and paralyzing both our lives and property. We wish to alert you that under no circumstances should any construction occur in the gas easement area that is... ...by party contract. We entered with Trent Properties and the prior owner, Astro Buck Property, Mr. Danny Ranzak, the owner developer of Hudson View Building, and ourselves. Under New York State law, the purchaser of our property, Astro Buck Partners, inherits the gas easement entered into by the Trent Properties and is legally required to apply with that contract's terms. You'll take appropriate action to defend our interest if this contract is breached. Thank you, Daniel and Sylvia Greenberg." I think we followed up, that area was not disturbed. We also, I thought we were following up on that one.
There's two, there's two parts to this. The first part that's pertinent to that letter is that we don't know anything to do, we have nothing to do with the gas easement.
Right.
We don't, we're not a party to it, we don't enforce the terms, nothing. The, the only involvement that we had was simply that that area was generally speaking disturbed, and we, from our standpoint, we came in and made sure that the area was restored enough to, so that it didn't create any stormwater issues or runoff.
Right.
It's involved with it, it's just we were aware of the activities on the property, wanted to make sure that there wasn't excessive runoff or anything like that.
Right. Very good. And the last non-leaf blower were historic district-related letters. It was from Karen Shassle, who's here tonight, I saw her, maybe she left. I'll go to her right there. "As you're undoubtedly aware, municipal officials throughout the country are supporting efforts for greater environmental preservation and climate control by signing on to the Mayor's National Climate Action Agenda. Among our neighboring communities here in Westchester, Mayors of Xial, Tarrytown, Swaturski of Hastings, Porchino of Arglesley, and Sapano of Yonkers are just a few of the many who are already signatories. Particularly after Irvington's recent celebration at the O'Hara Nature Center and the village's support of the sale of compost bins and rain barrels, we take justifiable pride in the record with you and the village's trustees continue to compile supporting protection of our natural habitat. Many such actions were proven that Irvington is a community with a high level of awareness of our personal responsibility to ensure the health and safety of generations to come. I have no doubt there will be many more such actions in the future. To that end, as a resident and a long-term member of the League of Women's Voters, which has a decades-long record of advocating for environmental issues, as you consider adding your name to nationwide effort of... ...is my hope, you have the full support of the trustees in adding Irvington to the list. Sincerely, Karen Shassle." Who's here in the front, on the right, my right. I will definitely take a look at that and then vote to sign it, and I have to imagine everyone on this board would support it as well.
Yeah, right, without a doubt.
I don't think there's much debate.
Thank you. Bring in the tracking.
Yes, it's always helpful to have a link. Next up is public comment, something not related to historic district or the other public hearing, which is the, the leaf blowers. There's nothing that related to those. I will move on to the consent agenda. Do you have any questions or comments on that? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And next is a continuation of the public hearing to consider a local law amending chapter of the Irvington Code to exempt the use of leaf blowers. Do you want to update everyone where we are?
Yeah, you know, I think, rather than saying what's different, I think it's just, it'd be easiest to go through the provisions of the law. The board had a work session on this last week and incorporated a bunch of changes, all sorts of, start from the top. Most of it's new, so not too much of it is repetitive, okay. Overall, gas-powered leaf blowers may not be used except, and there's quite a few exceptions here. It can be used during the spring and fall cleanup periods from March 15th to June 1st, and September 15th to December 15th, and then only on Monday through Friday between 8:00 and 5:00, Saturday, Sunday, and holidays between 10:00 and 4:00 p.m. They can also be used on one or two family properties. One gas-powered leaf blower once a week for no more than 30 minutes, and only during those same time periods, Monday to Friday, 8:00 to 5:00, Saturday, Sunday, and federal holidays between 10:00 and 4:00. So, that's different, quite different from the last draft. Okay, it can also be used on multi-family cluster residential developments and attached one-family dwelling developments, such as what people think of as multi-family developments, and then only between 9:00 AM and noon, Monday through Friday, and not at all on Saturdays, Sundays, and federal holidays. Additionally, this exception expires automatically on December 31st, 2018. Presumably, the managers of those properties will get electric blowers before, before they have to deal with them. They can also be used, gas-powered leaf blowers can be used up off of tennis clubs, and I mean it, employees performing their regular duties, provided that any leaf blower may not be used within 100 feet of the nearest residence. They can be used for responding to an emergency and when removing snow. So, besides the time limitations, there's a few other limitations. One is that the walk behind leaf blowers can't be used unless the property that's being cleaned is bigger than a half acre. And no more than a total of two handheld backpack leaf blowers can be used at any time unless the property that's being cleaned is greater than half an acre. Finally, no gas-powered leaf blower can be used unless, one, it meets the current Environmental Protection Agency exhaust standards, two, it's operated in accordance with the manufacturer's instructions and specifications, and third, that it operates at a noise level of 65 decibels. And then the fine is, a fine will be imposed at the property owner or the tenant to the property, and the first, first offense is $100, and any subsequent offense is $250.
And it's taking you back to August 1st, I think is the...
Oh, yeah.
Because we, obviously, we're not going to be able to vote on it until July, since this, we consider these material changes, which I know we've added paragraphs and changed quite a bit. So, we're unable to vote on it tonight because of the changes. We have to, we have to repost it and notice it again, so. There will be no vote tonight, but, you know, I think that, this is now the third meeting where we've discussed it in depth, in addition to, I don't know, half a dozen other meetings where we discussed it in less depth. I think we've succeeded in making no one happy with this law, which was one of our stated goals in the beginning. You know, I think we had, on both sides, you know, with, I think, the, the more common view being just ban them outright and let people figure it out. I think that, we did hear from a number of individual homeowners that said, you know, I use it for 10 minutes of the law off my deck, and then it's two minutes, you know, and as Scotty said, most of them are using electric, which are not banned under this, it's only gas-powered. But we kind of see this as a transition year, see how it goes. We obviously don't have anything on the books, we know several of our neighbors do, but, you know, I think this is a step in the right direction. We can see how this works, and we can work to, to make it, you know, potentially more stricter in the future. I think also what we found is 99% of the bad behavior is probably a handful of landscapers that, you know, continue to, they've worked in neighborhoods, the same neighborhoods, mostly smaller neighborhoods tied together, and they don't shut them off for hours at a time, which I don't think is how anyone ever intended. So, in addition to this law, we're also going to work on kind of good behavior for, for landscapers and other hired people to see, you know, because I honestly think if they had used these properly, we wouldn't even be considering this law, but we know that's not the case, so we're going to work with them. It's a two-pronged effort, one, you kind of have the hammer, and then you have the carrot as well, so. Those are my comments.
Registration.
Yes, and that's, I guess that's the third leg of this tool, is, is we're going to register landscapers, which is going to be the way we can ensure that they have our, they're aware of our, our good neighbor policies, as well as, you know, I'm sure they have compliant, you know, equipment and those types of things as well. It's a fairly, we're hoping it's not a big drain on Brenda, but, you know, they're all going to have to register. The police would easily be able to see if they are registered or not by a prominent sticker on their vehicles, and if they're not. And if they are, they have to do, you know, kind of minimal training, sign off that they received our, our documentation that Mark's working on, on developing, to ensure that they're aware of what good behavior is and is not chasing a leaf down the driveway with four leaf blowers.
But just so people understand, that registration isn't part of, of this local law, it has to be a separate local law.
Yes, we didn't want to hold it up while we developed the permitting process.
Right.
Just because, again, time is short, and we're already in our banned period, so we wanted to kind of act as quickly as possible, while still trying to, you know, kind of, you know, take on as many different views and try to make as many people happy as, as possible, while not, you know, pleasing anyone altogether.
So, I just had two comments, and then I'm done, one of which is, I'd actually like to see the sunset clause applied to more exceptions than just that one, and something we should think about, because if we're asking, you know, and, and multi-family folks, maintenance crews, to switch over, it seems to me that at some point we could be asking everyone to switch over. And the second comment about, so I guess what I'm saying is I would like to see a global, you know, removing exceptions for the homeowners for one or two family properties after December 31st, 2018, so they have to have ignition, electric, electric devices as well. And the other one that struck out, stuck out to me is that we don't have any kind of anti, anti-idling statement in here. I don't know how you enforce that, obviously, but it's one thing that I know is a common, you know, we were going to address it in the guide, but it's quite common to see these things get started up and then just running as they, you know, sitting on the ground, waiting for the crew to move to the next properties that oftentimes not shut off between properties or when there's a slowdown in the work being done on a particular property. So, it's something to think about. I think that, you know, these devices idling or maybe don't make as much noise, but they're still creating a very large amount of pollution.
You know, I'm not sure, Mark, but that could, it's possible that that's covered under the, under the specs, you know, this is, it has to be operated in accordance with manufacturer's instructions, and they may well say, you know, it's worth looking at.
Yeah, I don't, I, it's worth looking at. I doubt that a manufacturer turn equipment off. I just don't, they won't...
I can see for safety, they have, they have all these safety precautions, I don't know.
It might be a safety thing, right. So, it's definitely worth looking at, but otherwise, it would be something that I would like to suggest we should definitely consider. Now, would that, would that cause a problem with the substance of the law if we ever had that?
Well, it's another substantive change, and if it's a substantive change, then you have to continue the public hearing, yes. I mean, you may, you may think it's no big deal, but there's no denying that it's a substantive change, and then you would have to re-notice.
If, can I make a comment? We've been through many iterations of this, and I think that while it is, nobody is claiming this is perfect, and at least our goal, I think, is that everybody's more or less equally unhappy about parts of it, we do have one period where things can only last for another year. I think we need to look at the next phase of this as community education, and timely, the green policy task force has come forward to say they want to re-up and repurpose, and I think this will be a wonderful thing for them to begin to do. We have to revisit this in a year because we have a sunset provision, and I think that will be a good time to see, do we need to tweak this, do we need to add additional restrictions? Is this working well enough? How's it going? But to hold it up yet again...
Yeah, I don't, to do that, I just want to put this on a list of things, if it's something that we look at, six months, 12 months, 18 months, whatever.
In the best of all possible worlds, in 12 months, we will have to look at it, because people will begin, just like with the historic district guidelines, people buy in by learning about it. If people start buying into there are better ways of dealing with your lawn than putting nail polish on it, if people, you know, start to, you know, these beautiful turf lawns, and if your neighbors start turning off their leaf blowers, then we might not have a problem.
Yep.
But let's get started.
And also, as part of the public education thing, I think, the idea of having some reference to some, you know, the proof of existence of these functional, you know, battery-operated backpack or handheld leaf blowers, it's good to get that gathered together, and that's another thing that we could put up on probably the GPTF pages on the, on the Village website, so, you know, residents could, or, you know, or companies can, businesses can refer to them and see that, hey, yeah, there's a couple of manufacturers that have a range of models available.
Yep. I'm, I'm concerned about the delay of this, and I, you know, very much in favor of this sunsetting things that you mentioned, Mark, and the idling is a piece that I would hope that would be a strong message in the courtesy lessons.
Yes.
And that's, that's, that's a, you know, that, how that's written, I think, is really important, I'm really glad we're doing that part, but in the interest of not re-noticing this again, I think I would be more in favor of moving forward, as we said, and make this a interim step.
Well, I agree that, that this law will make a fairly large dent in the status quo as it is now. The goal really is to try to sunset most, if not all, the use of gas leaf blowers. I do have one question, I know we did this late in the day on Wednesday, and we talked, and our intention was to have some type of decibel level that was not going to be an enforced decibel where someone was standing there measuring, and we wanted it to be part of the manufacturer instruction as to what their listing of decibel level was. I just don't know if we did enough research on whether 65 decibels is a number that gas-powered leaf blowers reach, if they are that size. It may say in the Anse Standards that they, that they do at a certain level of operation, and that would be fine with me. I'm not sure what it says right now.
I think I was supposed to look into that since Wednesday, and Mark was going to chase me, but unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to do any more research on that.
I'll do it. I'll have something and send it around, just so that we have it, so that we have it, and we can then talk about it. I don't see that, if it's...
Our preliminary research did say that that was kind of the Anse Statute right now, so.
For gas.
For gas power, yeah.
That is not fine. Yeah, we just don't know the testing criteria.
Right, we didn't know where, like, how far away it was.
Because I guarantee, no gas leaf blower is going to make 65 milliampere full throttle, there's just no way. So, as long as we've got a number that we can use, that's fine.
My only further comment, and that's a good thing that, you know, you brought up to find out more about, but I'm just wondering realistically how long it would take to get the registration process in place? Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, it's not that difficult, but it's a...
You need a law.
Excuse me?
You need a law for us, and then after that, we'll follow.
What?
You need a law.
Yes, right.
You need to have the law to consider it.
Right, but then, once that happens, assuming that there's general agreement that we want that process, is it, is it administratively a long process? that process, is it a, is it administratively a long process to make it happen?
No.
Okay.
Basically, a lot of places like Yonkers with their, uh, access to their, uh, transfer site and stuff, a lot of these, um, as far as I understand, a lot of these are annual registrations and they usually tend to do a March time period where there's, it's not yet yard work time. It's kind of, yes, it's snow time, but it's kind of a quiet time for a lot of landscapers that they can get their, uh, permits in place and be ready to start hauling, uh, the spring cleanup into the transfer point. So I'm just imagining that there must, this, you know, we can do, I think you were going to talk to Terry Town, you could find out when they, if they have a rolling or if they have a fixed date that you need to be registered by or what.
I'm happy to go back or, I probably knows the administrator there too, when we get to that point.
You just decided that you want a registration process and we'll.
Yes, we'll work it out.
Take care of that.
Exactly.
I mean, you know, we'll, we'll recommend a good process.
Right. Okay.
Um, so maybe quickly go through correspondence. I always forget to do that. Uh, the first one was actually from Chris Harrison, superintendent of schools. He actually, he took the schools out of it because they don't have any authority over them, so I'm not going to read his letter. There was also, uh, there, uh, of the ones, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, as well. I believe there's only three new ones since Wednesday. I think I was going to quickly go through them without adding details since we already did consider these in our monthly discussions last Wednesday. So, and we appreciate everyone getting them in quickly so we could, uh, consider them as a line. Um, this, the first one is from Mitchell Bard. Um, balance goes like this. On one hand, landscapers feel like the regulations make the jobs harder and homeowners want perfectly manicured lawns. On the other side, the leaf blower is mid-noise that causes great harm to neighbors, not to mention those operating machines. More importantly, environmental nightmares of any carbon, in particular since it's atmosphere in a way that's not allowing vehicles to drive in our roads. If that's balanced, should the village have a health and safety residence for workers? So, that's basically one, uh, stronger legislation. Um, Thomas Biagi, um, he feels leaf blowers can make a solution in search of a problem. Uh, I understand that the proponents are suggesting that excessive noise and unsafe for children's ears will cause hearing loss. Is anyone aware of disproportionate amount of children in Irvington with hearing limitations? I don't think so. What's next outlawing power motors and going back to the sickle and sickle? Uh, it seems that all this law will accomplish is increase the cost of people's landscaping bills as the law will require greater amount of labor for their lawns and gardens looking neat and well-kept. Uh, Julia Downs, um, she didn't want, uh, leaf blowers to be used on Sundays or holidays. We consider amending the proposed ordinance to put a ban of leaf blowers on Sundays and holidays, even during spring and fall cleanup period. Um, current thinking is that Saturday is also a Sabbath day for some, so when people do their own lawns, they kind of do Saturday or Sunday. Um, and I think if you got holidays or, you know, during the period they're banned anyway, so. Um, Jenny Reed is very much in favor of the proposed amendment limiting use of gas-powered leaf blowers. Um, Beth Proper, uh, wanted the stronger one. Um, I think she wanted a complete ban, if I remember correctly, uh, mostly because of asthma and those types of things with all the, everything that stirred up. Peter Bernstein, uh, supported the view of the Irvington activists on the matter. Lisa Gan, um, as she cited a landscaper who uses only green gardening equipment, I think was mostly electric. Um, so she's in favor of tighter regulation and she feels that the landscapers will adjust.
Right, I just sort of play it. That's a really good letter for people to read, especially if you are, have some concerned landscapers crying on your shoulder, uh, as a client. The letter talks, is, she forwards it, uh, an email from her landscaper who talked about how he converted over to an all-electric, uh, uh, set of equipment for his, uh, clients and he basically charges more now as an all-green, environmentally friendly service and he's got more clients that he can deal with. So his business has expanded. So it's kind of a, an interesting story, but one worth sharing, especially if you have, as I said, a, a lands- a landscaper who's maybe a little bit of a doubting Thomas about the transition.
The other one's from Patrick Antuno, who was a landscaper who spoke. Um, he'd like to volunteer some of his time to sit and talk through some of the issues. He's not against the leaf blower law. He feels that some landscape contractors completely overuse leaf blowers during the nicer months of the year. Uh, and he actually suggested a green contractor's permit code like Tyre Towne, CP Howlow, uh, which actually, we kind of wholeheartedly adopted. We also, um, were open to his suggestion to change the dates a little bit, which was a little similar to the landscaper that spoke at our, uh, our meeting last Wednesday. Claire Cornish actually, um, sent a, uh, she was the one who sent the Irvington activists with environmental concerns, uh, statement, um, which we also heard from David Swybel last Wednesday. Thanks, Claire. Kathy Kaufman, um, was in agreement with the Irvington activists, the environmental subcommittee, um, and then here's the new ones. Uh, this one's from Downingwood. Uh, Dear Mayor Smith, I'm the property manager of Downingwood condominium. We are aware of the possible ban on leaf blowers in the village. Consider the specific, significant hardship that, should this ban be enacted? We have 35 acres that we must maintain with a short window of three hours a day to clean all of our property, including lawns, beds, roads, walks, pool areas, tennis courts, et cetera. It is impossible for you to continue to do that. Since we're self-contained and have a hundred-foot buffer zone that surrounds the property, a blower noise activity would not be heard by any of our outside neighbors. We'd like to have the village provide exemption for us with regards to leaf blower damage to this move forward. Really appreciate the village's consideration requests. And that's Sal, uh, Mark Toronto from Downingwood. Um, and then one that just came in actually this afternoon, buddy covers Field Point, so I thought I'd, you know, we'd read into the minutes. Um, basically it's, uh, Field Point community had previously requested full exemption from the proposed ordinance limiting the use of leaf blowers in the village. First written, first by written correspondence, then via presentation in public hearing. Fact we presented those board, 103 acres, it's greater than, just about any property in the village. The vast majority of complaints received by the village are smaller properties. Uh, their property contains multiple trees and woodlots on which are required to maintain. In fact, we've been reminded of this on occasion by the village administrator. They, given the expensive nature of our property, the actual time noise is heard anywhere locations minimal, that in very few areas of our property does noise travel to other property owners in the village, that by limiting the use of leaf blowers at three hours a day, the noise output actually increased as it would take our landscapers three days to blow through the property, where they're now only present one day and never on weekends. Respect the request, the village reconsider our requests for full exemption, uh, or if you don't, tell us why golf and tennis clubs, um, do get a full exemption. And that's all that I was following. Hopefully I got the gist of each one. Um, so now I guess we will continue the volunteering. Um, so if anybody wanted to speak, I know we've worked with a lot of familiar faces here, but, uh, if you have something to say, happy to hear it now.
Hi, I'm, uh, Chad Kerr, I'm a resident, long resident of the village. Um, I, I have really just a drafting question with this and this is not a change. I think it's only a clarification. But I note that in item B and C, you deal with walk behind leaf blowers and then, then backpacks. In B, you make, you try to refer to the items in some paragraph there above. I found that confusing. If I could make the suggestion that in, in 10, I have the gas leaf, gas-powered leaf blowers, the foundation is applied to use of gas leaf, gas-powered leaf blowers of all kinds. So that would make sure it's clear it covers walk behind and backpacks. And then in B, I would take out the initial language in addition to the time limitations above and just say walk behind leaf blowers may not be used and then no more, and C, no more than two. I think that doesn't change anything. I think it just clarifies, I found the starting front of B to be a little confusing, so that's my only comment. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Anne Altman. Uh, I've spoken before and I know that they, uh, talking about this week, a odd week, might seem like a drag for a lot of folks who aren't directly dealing with this every single week in their own homes, but just some things to think about. Seems like some people have an unusually high tolerance for their own noise and then maybe they become desensitized to it. Uh, but when it comes to things like leaving equipment idling and, and using excessively loud commercial equipment on really small, tiny lots, this is something I deal with every week. So I'm noticing that common sense isn't that common. So if you employ a landscaping company like I have twice, which is why I'm speaking from experience, they came and they used these obnoxious gas leaf blowers excessively for a very long time. I asked them never to do it again and when they came back, they did when I turned my back. So I know how difficult it is to change habits. However, this week I planted trees. I hired a company that's green to plant the trees and they used a gas tiller, which wasn't as loud as a leaf blower because I have a decibel meter, but it was so obnoxious. It was, I couldn't, I couldn't handle it. And I came out, it was a very hot day and I asked them to please stop because if it's bothering me, it's got to bother someone else. So the noise travels seven residences away at, at decibel levels that high. So I would just ask that when you're enjoying your time outside, whether you're, you know, walking with your spouse or you're walking your dog and you're like, what a lovely day this is, wow, it's so nice and quiet. That's because someone's made a choice at that time, or it's just pure luck, that they're not using gas leaf blowers. So I think my neighbors benefit from the fact that I don't do that and I would like more folks to feel the same way. And I don't know how I, how that's taught, but if someone told me that something I was doing was bothering them, a neighbor, I would say, I had no idea. I am so sorry about that. Let me see what I can do. That would be the appropriate response. I would think that would be a knee-jerk response, but it doesn't seem to be. It's more like, I'm not breaking the law, is what they say. But according to the current law and the books for Irvington, it says, "For nuisances, it should be unlawful for any person to make, continue, or cause to be made or continued any loud, unnecessary, or unusual noise, or any noise which reasonably annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of others within the village of Irvington." So this is happening to me every week and I don't know what I'm supposed to do. So I'm asking you what I'm supposed to do. I don't really want to call the police on my neighbors who don't understand or they're not home, but it's already breaking the law. Um, so I just want that to sit for a second and then just know that that's just the definition of being a good neighbor. So, um, this is the Boy Scout handout that my son is in Cub Scouts and I was looking at it today and I, I said, this is important. I'll just read this. "So one definition of character is the willingness to do what is right regardless of circumstances." I think I'll just end on that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Claire Cornish. Um, well, we're pleased that, you know, we finally seem to be getting some kind of vote on the leaf blower issue. We were somewhat disappointed that the ban now is in effect June 1st because it seems most of the spring cleanup should be done by May, at least by May 15th. I don't really understand why, you know, they need to still be using leaf blowers due to June 1st. The other issue is moving forward, I don't want to get, it isn't like leaf blowers are the only issue. We have to look at all landscaping practices in general around here. You know, you see people with lawnmowers that are about four foot wide and, um, you know, it just seems overkill and there are gas-powered hedge trimmers and edges, edges and all kinds of other equipment that I think we need to look at as well. Um, so, but this seems like a good first step, but definitely I don't want it to stop here because there's a long way to go. Thanks.
Anybody else?
David Swybel. Um, Irving activists. Um, I would like to applaud the board for moving forward and getting through this. Brian Thomas, I took to heart, uh, you know, nobody's being pleased. Uh, you stated very well. Uh, I think your statement is accurate, uh, that, uh.
I'm glad I let everyone down.
There is a large majority. Having said that, there is, your statement also said, there is a large majority that feels, uh, more people feel they would want to ban than not. Uh, having said that, there are some problems, uh, and you've tried in the legislation to address those. I think you've done a good job. There's many of us that would like to see much more. Uh, I agree with Mark's comments that those things would be great, but I think from a practical point of view, uh, and a majority of us feel from a practical point of view, we want something out. And Janice, you stated that clearly. Uh, so we are in favor of moving forward with this ordinance as you have it so that there is no requirement for a re-notice and let me use the season term. Uh, and Janice, you're correct, uh, that because of the sunset provision, this thing is going to be needed to be reconsidered again. Uh, I would like to comment that the reason the date of the sunset provision was put there was because we needed that much time as a village to give notice to those people who have year-round contracts, uh, and, uh, with the large developments. And that's a problem for them. It takes them months to vet a contract with their landscapers. Uh, that's not true with Oklahoma. So we could, if we were introducing additional legislation in six or nine months from now, not have the long time limit for a sunset provision for individual homeowners that we would need for, uh, a developer. And just as a private note here, I am so glad that you did not exclude the developments and I was very interested to see the letter from Downingwood. Uh, the particular property that I live in, the entire length of my house that I'm living in, which is about 75 feet front to back, is perfectly parallel with the border of Downingwood and it is exactly 20 feet away from their property. And my deck is actually only, which extends from the house, is only 10 feet from their border. Uh, so there is no 100-foot buffer there. Obviously it was because I literally, when they do their regular thing, I cannot work with the windows indoors shut in my house. I have to stop because I can't hear on the phone because it's 20 feet from, you know, me on the phone when I work from home, which is pretty. So, uh, uh, in rounding this up, uh, uh, you guys have done a really good job. We're thankful for that. We feel that your registration process is hugely important and we would like to contribute to Mark to, uh, helping, um, with the educational process and what might be done for landscapers and research for green or landscapers. And I think ultimately your comment is true. If, at the work session, there would have been four landscapers who stood up and said, I'll do the thing without gas and I won't charge you anymore, we would have banned leaf blowers, but we don't have that yet. Uh, but that doesn't mean they don't exist and, um, so thank you all very much and appreciate the hard work. And, uh, I don't know how you guys do it, but I'm just trying to comment about the zoning board, uh, what you're, you're dating more.
Can I just suggest that you speak with either, speak with MJ, MJ Wilson about, uh, probably working with the GPTF?
We have requested that, uh, uh, at least minimally, one of our members, we, we have a number that are willing to volunteer to be part and we have already put our names in.
Okay.
But that was three months ago.
Well, we.
And we haven't heard anything yet. So we're, we're ready whenever they are.
We were bitten hiatus, so we just kind of had our.
And we had a hold on that as well.
Yeah, well, yeah, I know. And, and I, I, I work with Nikki all the time.
And, and I, I, I work with Nikki all the time, so...
Yeah, so when the public education thing comes forward as a process, you guys need to be involved. I mean, it doesn't make sense to have, you know, such a division of labor, like two different groups doing things.
Exactly.
Synchronized. But I also, I think, uh, when I get a little bit further along, I'd like to share the courtesy guidelines and get some, you know, feedback.
Great.
I've sent it, one version of it to GPTF, uh, a few votes there, and as we move forward with this, it's going to be important to get that mailed down pretty quickly.
I'm happy to hear that you're already at work on it, so that's great.
Yeah, I do have hope too, that just this discussion has made people reconsider their own perfect lawn and what that means. Because to me, when, you know, my lawn guys come, they, first they don't usually blow. But if you do blow, it looks great for about 10 minutes, and then stuff falls. So I don't really understand the...
That's, that's the, that's the word.
I don't really get the whole concept of it, so I...
There was editorial in the New York Times this last week on that same subject.
Yeah, so it's, I think that it's slowly changing. I, I, I gotta tell you, I know people are complaining about Jerry Carapello's property with the overgrown lawn.
It's not that bad.
It doesn't really, I kind of like it. I just wish there was more diversity of grass, unfortunately it was such a great lawn, that it didn't have the diversity of grass that, to me, looks really cool. Like, I love wild grasses, so...
I like the meadow.
Marry this or something, you know?
I did like people saying it looks like Trump's hair, though.
Well, it's kind of getting... If you don't see diversity of grass, that means they're using Roundup.
Yeah. And I think that was Roundup since the 70s there, so...
Exactly.
It might glow at night, but, uh...
All right. I'll remember to change.
Anyone else?
Good.
Good. Okay, so we're going to continue the...
I'm getting this conversation, but I'll ask people questions. Hi, I'm Michael Hannah from the Downingwood property. So I just wanted to note first, our property is an attempt to be very environmentally conscious. We are not using pesticides on our lawn. We worked with the Green Task Force in terms of our mulching initiative. We, we held a demonstration in which we learned, and other properties learned how to mulch on sites. Uh, and that was used with a leaf blower, which was a very effective, efficient process, and allowed us to embrace it very quickly. Uh, so those are just a few examples. But, uh, I'm still trying to learn about, about this ban, and, um, you know, when I went online, I was looking for examples of large properties that are using electric blowers on, on their property, or other methods for managing. And I couldn't find it, so I would love for, for other people are able to find examples or bring examples, uh, because I, I haven't been able to find them yet in terms of how it would impact us. And then one question I had is in terms of the emergency piece, uh, you know, even just in the last few days, we've got a lot of, we have 170 trees on our property, large trees. Uh, so we had a lot of leaves fall in with the rain. It is a danger. It's not, it's not just for aesthetics. We have...
Yeah, walkways.
People, older people, walkways, parking lots, and we certainly don't want those people falling and hurting themselves. And so we work to remove the leaves for their safety.
So for the emergencies, we thought we'd actually talked briefly about making it, you know, declared emergency or something like that. We didn't think that we needed to do that. We think, we were hoping that common sense prevails, and that if it's a bright sunny day, and it's been sunny for a week, you can't say it was an emergency. But even today, with this, you know, the severe winds and things, if you had to quickly blow off your walks, you know, we don't, we don't want to, you know, we don't want, we want to, we want to work with everyone on this. You know, we want to limit the use of leaf blowers, but at the same time, keep things safe. Like, uh, yeah, there's another, uh, it's not called Hudson House, it's Hudson, what is it? The dining built on the corner over here. Uh, it's the one right on, on, uh, northbound.
River House.
River House. River House. So like River House, they have, they have a flat roof, and if anything gets in the drains, they quickly blow it. That's the kind of thing, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to be so draconian that common sense doesn't apply. Um, so I think the same, we, we view it the same thing with emergencies. If, if you have an emergency every day for eight hours, it's probably not an emergency. But if...
A lot of rain this season.
Yes, if someone, if someone judges that their walkways are unsafe, you know, I don't think that that's going to be a problem. At least not in the short term, until we have something else more workable. Um, you know, we did have a, a demonstration of a electric backpack blower last week, which seemed pretty good, but they're 2,500 bucks instead of 400 bucks or whatever. So, you know, I think as we move on, maybe when you replace them, you can try one of the, you know, that, that type of thing. So that's why, again, I think that this is a, a big step, but it's not, you know, as draconian as some people like, because I think we want, we don't want people falling and, you know, having broken wrists because, you know, we're, we're getting rid of leaf blowers or something like that either. So we're trying to strike that right balance. And actually, you know, Caesar Manfredi, who I think is in north and near south, is that right?
Yes, our neighbor.
You know, we, that's one of the exemptions is, because he said, listen, we, we try to use them as minimally as possible. Um, and we said, you know what? That sounds reasonable, let's try that. Um, and if he comes back and says, you know what? We found out a way not to use it, we'd be happy to take that exemption out. If he says, you know, it's not three hours, it's four hours, we probably listen to that too, because we don't want to create unsafe things either. Um, and we don't want to have too many unintended, unintended consequences. But we also do know that a lot of our neighbors have had this for, you know, five, 10 years, um, and they've been able to adapt. So all that being said, we try to kind of strike a balance, and we, we appreciate, you know, the larger properties working with us. Um, I'm sure Downingwood and Field Point will as well, and, and we'll figure something out.
And then just the last question, or thought, is that, you know, certainly for our property, we, uh, in Irvington, represent a very diverse community for Irvington, and one that often has, uh, part of our population on a more fixed or limited income. And so I just ask that we're always conscientious of the impacts to a property like ours, because we try and keep our increases limited, so as not to affect that population.
And that's something else that we don't know. We can, we hear the landscaper side saying it's going to be a huge increase in costs. We get pushed back and say, well, what have you been doing in Hastings for seven years? Uh, what have you been doing in Tarrytown? Um, you know, how much more is it for someone in Hastings or Tarrytown than in Irvington? So we don't know those answers necessarily. So I think we will in a year, and even though this is going to be a small window, if all of a sudden it's like, geez, you know, it's taking us six hours instead of two, you know, we'll hear about that. And we can, we can, we can, before we make any more changes, we can, we can kind of get all the input from everyone.
Or maybe we hit this perfectly right, and everyone will be happy next year.
Right. Thank you.
So Michael, one thing before you.
Yeah.
Like I mentioned before, I'll reiterate, look at Lisa Gens, uh, Lisa Gens, uh...
It did, it sounded like it was very profitable for those, for that company.
But you might even contact him to find out about the equipment, the cost, what he's done. Uh, it sounds like it could be a, a real, like, School of Health Knox kind of knowledge that could help you make some decisions.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
So I, I just had one question. This issue of the sunsetting, is, is there something that happens when that date comes, or it just happens, right? It's not like we have to revote on something. It's just we're aware of it.
The way we decide that this provision automatically expires December 31st, 2018, so somebody's doing it in June 2019, sorry, you don't get that exception if it expires.
I mean, it might be that by the time we're getting closer to that window, we're going to want to make changes for, or exceptions, so, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I think we're going to be monitoring, having the feedback.
No, you may want to make changes, but the thing is, it's going to happen. You have to, for the extension of that.
It's in the stars.
Okay, so the public hearing stays open, and we'll see everyone on July 17th, hopefully for a vote. Um, next up is adoption of historic district design guide. Um, I think we have to talk about the public hearing that we had continued.
Yeah, okay, just, just briefly. There were a lot of concerns expressed at the, of the last public hearing about codifying the design guide, putting it into the code, which the last one of the law did. So I, I had a thought, and I recommended to the board of trustees that they could be dealt with it just as effectively by having the board of trustees adopt the guidelines and state in some detail their intent in adopting these guidelines when, when they, when they adopted the resolution. Uh, and then include that resolution with the design guidelines. Because a lot, a lot of the, there's a lot of, um, kind of nuance in, in, in the board's, you know, consideration about the intent, it would be hard to write into the law, so it just seemed like it might be a better way to do it. Um, I think probably the best thing is for Brian to just read, uh, read the whole resolution.
Sure.
And it's, I think it states the board's intent pretty clearly. Um, so, that being the case, that there really isn't any need to amend the village code with respect to the design guide, you just go and adopt them. Um, and the one thing that was in the local law besides adopting the, um, design guide was a change in the appeals process, which you're doing in a separate law anyway, so you don't need to do that for why I explained. And then the one other thing is I have an environmental assessment for, for the last, for the last local office. Exactly, exactly the same as it describes. You can just go through that, and I'm sure you'll find no, uh, that. Brian, is this the, that's what you...
I'll just read. Okay. Whereas the 2003 comprehensive plan recommended the designation of the Main Street area as a historic district and the adoption of a historic district ordinance. And whereas in February 2010, the Board of Trustees, in recognition of the distinctive and important historical and architecture identity of the Main Street area, amended the Board of Architecture Review chapter of the Village Code to list as one of its purposes to, quote, "protect the historic character of the village, including in particular the Main Street historic area," end quote, but did not provide specific guidance as to how the purpose should be accomplished. And whereas in August 2011, the Board of Trustees established a historic district committee and charged it inter ala with, to, quote, "recommend to the Board of Trustees specific legislation and historic preservation guidelines for historic district," end quote. And whereas in 2013, the village applied to have the Main Street historic area listed on the National Register of Historic Places as the Irvington Historic District. And whereas in January 2014, the Irvington Historic District was officially listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And whereas, the designation on the National Register applies to the Main Street area as a whole, rather than to any individual house in historic district, Irvington Historic District. And whereas the Historic District Committee, in consultation with Stephen Tilly Associates, developed the Irvington Historic District Design Guide and Recommendations, now known as the Design Guide, and requested that the Board of Trustees adopt the Design Guide. And whereas the Board of Trustees has reviewed the Design Guide and believes that it is, believe that its discussion of the varied and missed historical styles and features, along with its suggested approaches for modifying, renovating, repairing, and expanding buildings in the Irvington Historic District, will, will assist property owners in the district and design professionals to work for them to renovate, repair, and modify their buildings in a way that is harmonious and compatible with the historic character of the Irvington Historic District. And whereas the Board of Trustees intends that the Design Guide serve as a useful tool, not a regulatory document, for the Architectural Review Board, ARB, to use in considering applications in the Irvington Historic District. And whereas the Design Guide recognizes that many buildings in the Irvington Historic District over the years have been modified from their, and their original materials replaced with contemporary materials, yet does not require, or even generally recommend that the buildings be restored to their original materials. And whereas the Board of Trustees intends that the ARB use the Design Guide to preserve the character of the Irvington Historic District as a whole, rather than to treat each building in the Irvington Historic District as historically designated. And whereas the Design Guide specifically states that the ARB shall take into consideration the costs associated with implementing recommendations in the Design Guide. And whereas the Board of Trustee intends that the recommendations in the Design Guide be balanced against the cost to and preferences of the property owner. And whereas, in doing that balancing, the Board of Trustee intends that the ARB give more weight to the elements of the building that led it to being listed as a contributing building on the National Register of Historic Places Registration Form. And whereas the Design Guide does not require any additional approvals or appearances before any boards beyond what is already required by the Village Code. And whereas, a goal of the Design Guide is to help speed the process for applications in the Irvington Historic District by advising property owners early in the process what factors the ARB will be considering. And whereas, adoption of the Design Guide is an unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECR, and the Board of Trustees has determined that such application, that such adoption will have no negative environmental impacts. Now therefore be it resolved, that a negative declaration under SECR be issued, and further resolved that the Board of Trustees adopt the Irvington Historic District Design Guide and Recommendations dated June 5th, 2017. And further resolved that the Design Guide may be modified only by a resolution of the Board of Trustees. And further resolved that the Design Guide be posted on the village's website and included in the Building Department's online directions for ARB review requirements. And further resolved that the Design Guide be publicized and made available to all property owners in the Irvington Historic District. Realtors who do business in the village, and design professionals who regularly work on properties in the Irvington Historic District. I guess that's it. I, I can't believe I didn't pause at the end of that. But, uh, that's it. Obviously, this has been a, another discussion that's gone on, uh, for many, many years. The specifics for the last month at least, um, I think we did, we thought about it quite a bit, about what the right approach is here. Again, to find a balance between, um, you know, kind of ensuring the historic district is preserved, as well as property owners' rights, um, as well as having, you know, we've given the ARB the charge without much meat to fulfill their charge. We had an unbelievable committee come up with an unbelievable guide, uh, that I think everyone has read it, has been unbelievably impressed with, whether it's the pictures or the words, it depends on the individual, I guess. But I think, you know, I think this is, this is something that I, I think we're, I think I spoke to the whole board, I think we're very proud with where we've ended up. Because I think unlike the leaf blower law, I think most people are happy with this. And I think that this can be a powerful tool to help preserve the historic district, and I think it points out some important things. I think the, the fact that no one building is, you know, other than, of course, the, the Town Hall building itself, uh, being excluded from that, but most of the, the buildings in the historic district that are contributing buildings are not in themselves, you know, historic, and most of them are mismoshes of, of different, uh, different designs. And mo, and a lot of them have been modified, but there are still some important pieces. And I think that that's what we really want the ARB to focus on and protect those, whether it's a cornice, or, you know, the way the windows are, the port, whatever it is, there's so many different things, and each one's different, um, that it's, it's hard to have, you know, really have hard regulation, uh, even if you wanted to, I think, because it's, each building is so different, and each application's so different. Um, but providing a guide, uh, I think will also, and I think it's great that one of the goals is to speed the process, rather than slow the process. And we specifically didn't want to have a historic district committee that you had to go before. Uh, we wanted to keep it with the ARB, who has, has gotten really good at, you know, doing these applications. Uh, you know, like, all those things being said, I think we did find the exact right balance on this one, um, that people don't have to worry that, you know, we're, you know, they're not going to be able to paint their, their, their building blue or white. Um, and at the same time, I think we feel that we protected the historic district in an appropriate manner, that, uh, for, for a historic district, not a historic building. And it's a very different thing, and it's a much harder thing to do. Um, and in addition, we have a great educational document, uh, for homeowners, historians, whoever. That's what I say about that. After reading, you think I would have taken a break, but...
Have a drink.
Yes.
I'm, uh, I'm perfectly happy with this. I'm very satisfied with this, and, um, from my discussions with the committee, the committee is happy with this. And I, I reflect what you said about a balance, and I, I think, I, I feel we reached it. Took a record number of whereas's, but I did...
Yes. Well, I just want to thank Mary Ann for her creative thinking, and I think, um, it allows me to be incredibly comfortable with what we have, and the wording that's in this resolution, I think is exactly what we want.
In that one meeting where we threw out all of our subtle things we wanted, how the hell you got them all in?
She got them all in.
Someone, I was reading, and I forgot something of the things you said, but, uh, great job, Mary Ann. Mark, can I point?
No, I'm fine with everything. The only, the only question I had reading this whole thing was the last resolved, which was, which I made a comment about in email, but no one responded. But the, um, what does it mean to be publicized and made available? I mean, are we, you know, is that just TBD? Are we saying we're going to give copies to all the contributing buildings? Or are we going to have it, like, stacks available in the building department?
I think that that's why we kind of left it a little bit vague, because I think we, you know, we didn't reach conclusion. I think originally we thought we'd print them all and send them out to everybody, but then we realized that'd be very expensive, so...
That was my question.
We thought maybe we would send a regular letter to everyone with a link.
And they asked if they want a printed copy.
And to let, let them know that there are copies available at the library or Village Hall if they want them, but this way we don't have to print 250 copies. We can print 25 copies and see how many people want them.
We should also have like a sheet, or it should be on the, I guess, the ARB checklist for links to the actual PDF online, so we don't have to...
Yeah, I think it's better to have the link too, because if we do update it, they can always find it there, you know, as opposed to just a hard copy.
I'm glad I have my hard copy.
We should have a couple bound, like, really hard copies.
Well, it should be available, but maybe you have to find out what the cost is, and then, you know, perhaps it is available through, you know, salad at Jordaine's.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, uh...
Sounds like we're...
Should we have a public hearing?
No.
We did, but I think we actually have to vote.
We don't need a hearing for a resolution.
Public hearings, or if we don't have a law, we just let it go.
It'll be, we'll note that it's canceled.
A public hearing's canceled.
Withdrawn, whatever.
Yeah, we'll use some more in a minute.
But other than that, I guess I'll make a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Thank you all that have worked on this for so long. Good luck to the ARB, being our guy.
We don't want to see you back here. Rick is ducking.
Thank you very much for all your hard work. I also applaud Mary Ann's work on this. Thank you, thank you. And on the committee, thank you, thank you. Oh, you get a copy bound.
That should go.
The Historical Society.
Oh, yes, they have their letters.
They're about $10.
Yeah, I'm sure you could send it off to the Midwestern to shine and get them back at like a few dollars a pound.
Thank you all. I just had one letter from Leola, but. It's possible I saw.
Oh, it was the last couple of days. Yeah, the Historical Society, yeah, right. So it's somewhere in there.
And there was a secret form. Now to the heart of the matter, the bonding resolutions. Karen, you're not leaving for the bonding resolutions, are you? No, I was just saying, we have the Capitol Budget Bond Resolutions.
Oh, I did want to say, can I say something before Karen leaves? We had a wonderful presence of Abbott House at the Celebrate Irvington Day, and Karen was one of the volunteers, along with Deb Field, that kept the table occupied and helped people understand their relationship and their needs. And thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Wonderful to have that presence. Appreciate it.
You've done a lot to help that.
So Brenda, this is your big night.
Oh, boy.
Everybody's here to hear this.
Thank you, Rick, for sitting your ass.
How many pages?
Well, it's all the four, it's four separate resolutions combined.
And we do have a summary to you.
Yes. So what I did in here is I segmented, you know, each of the bonding resolutions and itemized the, you know, the items that are in each. And at the end, we have the cost of issuance at 2%. So there's a 2% addition on each of those resolutions. So the first one, for instance, it says $440,000. The actual resolution is, I think, a little bit more, $448,800, because it combines the 2% bonding fees. So these are the items that were contained in our capital budget. And what this does now, it gives the authorization for me to go forward and secure financing.
Obviously, we discussed the capital budget, we voted on the capital budget, and now we're actually empowering you to go out and get the money to enact our plan.
Right. So actually, there's no authorization for the village, you know, departments to purchase the equipment until financing is in place.
Which makes sense. I think it's exciting, too, you only get a fire engine like once, you know, once every 10 years or so, so this is a, it's a big year. They last for about 20 years or so, so it's always an exciting time to, when we're buying a, not that sidewalks and radio consoles aren't exciting, but fire truck is, maybe it's just me being a big kid, but.
Well, only if we get to ride in it.
I bet, I bet that could be arranged. There's always a big, there is a big party, the wet down, they call it, where someone hits it with a bottle of champagne, which always makes you nervous. I hope it's a weak bottle of champagne. Yeah, exactly, the weekend aside, to heat it up or something, right?
It's a sky eerie. It's probably has a very strange color.
Red at night, tell us the lights.
I don't know, it's just that there were those thunderstorms.
I think it's okay.
Sorry.
Stands up. We're trying to get the basement as it is. I'm just going to read the, the top part of the bond resolution.
Please don't read it all.
Bond resolution dated June 19, 2017. Does anyone, actually, does anyone have any questions? Bond resolution dated June 19, 2017, authorizing the issuance of up to $448,800 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the villages of Irvington, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the cost of the, one, the acquisition of computer equipment, two, acquisition of police equipment, and three, the construction and reconstruction, reconstruction of sidewalk improvements, all in and for the village. Do they deserve separate resolution, or does it go in that?
No, you can say, as noted.
As noted.
That is the resolution, if you read the whole thing, so.
We'll do these separately, I think.
Yeah, so all four separate and just say as noted.
As noted, as detailed below.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor. And Brenda, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that each of these is broken out to the useful life, is that?
Yes, that's correct. So the first one was 10-year. The second one now is 15-year, next one is 20-25-year.
Spoiler alert. Bond resolution dated June 19, 2017, authorizing the issuance of up to $188,700 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the villages of Irvington, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition of machinery and apparatus for construction and maintenance, and the construction and reconstruction of road improvements, all in and for the village, in the village, as detailed below. I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Two more to go, this team. Bond resolution dated June 19, 2017, authorizing the issuance of up to $1,4,700 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the villages of Irvington, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the cost of, one, the acquisition of firefighting vehicles, and, two, the construction of, construction and reconstruction of culvert improvements, all in and for the village. I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Bond resolution dated June 19, 2017, authorizing the issuance of up to $306,000 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the villages of Irvington, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of improvements to village buildings. I'll make a motion, can I have a second? All in favor. Brenda, you happy, or you want a minute? Thank you.
Go borrow.
Break out the cigars.
All good projects. The next item is actually an exciting 20-year in the making. Well, this is kind of the boring paperwork part. As most people, most people know that, you know, when we developed Sina Hudson Park, it was a consortium of people involved, and the two, you know, owners were, ended up being Sina Hudson and the villages of Irvington. And that was for a period of 20 years. Believe it or not, 20 years is now up, and that's since the park's actually opened. I think that's about 17 years, something like that, but since we acquired the property. The Sina Hudson obviously still is going to have a stake in it, which I guess Larry was playing, but this is kind of the symbolic turnover to us. We hope to have some kind of, something more exciting than a reading of a resolution, maybe a little barbecue or picnic down at the park with maybe all the original players who were involved and that sort of thing. But that's going to happen a slightly later date, but tonight, we can do the paperwork, Larry. So did you have anything else you wanted to kind of talk about easement or anything? Or just read the resolution?
Well, yeah, that's, that is true. So we are getting ready to do a closing on the, on the two transactions that are going on here. One is the transfer of the property 100% to the village. The other transaction is the village executing a conservation easement back in, in favor of Sina Hudson. The reality of it is, is that it doesn't change the operations, it doesn't add layers of costs or anything like that. It's, the park will continue to be operated the same way it's operated now. Sina Hudson has a say, as of today, they had a say in how the park was operated because they were co-owners, and they'll have a say in how the park is operated going forward as a result of the conservation easement. Simply means that, you know, we can't make improvements to it without their prior approval, that type of thing. I mean, there's, there's certain details about that, but it's, that's largely what the case has been these past 20 years, so.
So Larry, just one quick question, as I read through, and it talked about the, the use of the property, and they gave examples, and it said, as a public park for recreational purposes only, including but not limited to, they gave a list of things. And some of those things are things that are not allowed to be done in the park as it stands now, like bicycling and rollerblading. It doesn't matter that it says, that it includes those things?
It simply means that, that's the, that's the, the full realm of things we can do, but we, we still make the decisions on what the rules are and how the park is operated.
So say you wanted to change that in the, in the future.
We could add.
Yeah.
And if it weren't on that list, you couldn't do it.
Then we couldn't add ATV riding or something, if we decided that that was, if that was something we wanted.
Toxic dumps.
Right. No, that's absolutely right.
That's a good question, but yeah, it's a.
You know, the interesting thing, not to get into the detailed discussion about it, one of the things, you know, Sina Hudson, when they drafted this, this document, this document was originally drafted back in 1997, and it accompanied the co-ownership agreement that we had with Sina Hudson, because attached to it was essentially a form of the conservation easement that we were going to be expected to, to sign and turn over. It got modified over 20 years, they wanted to make some changes to it. But one of the things that was on the list of things that could happen was something like a swimming pool, or, I mean, there's a whole list of other elements that were being considered back at the time, so, you know, those types of things, now they're, those aren't even in our stream of consciousness anymore, because it probably physically can't even get built down there anyway, but, but the point is, is it was kind of established what the universe of things was, but it doesn't mean that we have to do it, which means that we're allowed to if we want.
Anything else, or should I start my reading again?
Shorter.
It seems like smaller words to me.
Mary Ann didn't write the first part, right?
Whereas, the Sina Hudson Land Trust, Inc., SHLT.
You didn't have the input from the board.
And the villages of Irvington, the village, entered into a co-ownership agreement dated February 11, 1997, as extended by a modification dated February 16, 2017. The agreement pursuant to which SHLT acquired an interest in the property described we were in, in the name of SHLT, and the village as tenants in common. And SHLT, which is way too close to something else, has an undivided 60% interest in the property, and the village has an undivided 40% interest in the property. And whereas the village has performed the remediation work and improvements and maintenance to the property in accordance with the land use plan and other work required pursuant to the agreement. And whereas, the village is obligated pursuant to the agreement to purchase SHLT's 60% interest in the property for $1, subject to SHLT holding a perpetual conservation easement. And whereas the form of conservation easement has been prepared in accordance with the agreement, copy which is on file with the village administrator, now therefore be it resolved to approve a conservation easement covering all of Sina Hudson Park, tax parcel ID 2.80-33-1 and 2.80-33-2, in favor of the Sina Hudson Land Trust, Inc., and further resolved to accept full ownership of Sina Hudson Park in exchange for said conservation easement. And further resolved to authorize the mayor, village administrator, and/or village attorney to execute all necessary documents, and to authorize the clerk treasurer to make any necessary closing adjustment payments in order to effectuate the conservation easement and ownership transfer outlined above. I will make the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Appointment of personnel in the Department of Public Works, laborer.
You see it outlined there, yeah, we have another retirement coming up in early July, and there's a recommendation, this is of a laborer, and there's a recommendation for replacement for that laborer.
And I would like to thank Billy Irwin for 30 years of work. He's another staple in Irvington that's, you know, it's three now, three kind of well-known faces around town that aren't going to be here. It's kind of strange. I heard that Billy's actually playing a movie, so.
Is that right?
I think so. I haven't heard that officially, but, which is kind of, it's always a change. It's just, I don't really remember time without Billy Irwin around. Resolve to appoint Thomas Ziola, Zioli, to the position of laborer step one and an annual salary of $47,400 effective July 10, 2017, subject to completion of probationary period of not less than 12 weeks and not more than 52 weeks. I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor. Approve of contract 2017-13 with Peter J. Landy, Inc., for the repair of a pedestrian footbridge in Memorial Park.
So what I'll say with this, to set the context for this, this is actually a FEMA, already funded FEMA repair. I believe it was related to Tropical Storm Sandy originally. And it may have even been Irene, but I think it was Sandy. In any case, there are repairs that were necessary, FEMA agreed with them. We had some estimates back at the time to, to look at those repairs. FEMA paid us based upon those estimates, and we are now getting around to making those repairs. The, this is not a, it wasn't a sealed bid because of the price, the amount of money that's involved, which is, I think, 20, 25,000 in that range. But we did get three written proposals, which was outlined in the attachments.
It sounds like we're getting started right away, I think, or pretty close.
Yeah, literally, they're ready to mobilize tomorrow morning, to be honest with you, so.
Let's not hold it up.
Yeah, so the Parks Department's anxious to get moving and get this repaired and out of the way.
And I also love the word riprap, which is one of my favorites. I don't even get to read, we should have put that in the whole. Resolve to approve contracts 2017-13 with Peter J. Landy for repair of pedestrian footbridge, including riprap in Memorial Park, and authorizing the village administrator to execute said proposal. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can I have a second? Thank you, Larry, all in favor.
Thank you.
Reports of board, standing committees, and officers, trustee liaison.
Well, the only thing I have to mention, we already talked about successfully giving out the awards, everyone showed up, we had, we had some audience there.
It was like 20 people?
Yes. And Brian didn't mispronounce any names, so it was.
Officer Revivero, which I've been practicing ever since.
So the, the only thing I wanted to report, and I think Larry will be providing some to the board shortly, but the traffic committee met with the, the chief and several officers, including the. Okay, anyway, so the point was, it was a very interesting, successful meeting. We reviewed some of the ticket statistics and some of the ideas about moving forward and having kind of a data, everyone was agreeing to a data-driven kind of enforcement policy, and also the need to, to go back into areas where there had been heightened enforcement and to put the speed loggers up in those areas to actually see if the, there's an impact in behavior once a certain number of tickets are given out. So more to be discussed, but it was, seemed to be a very convivial meeting, and everyone was, seemed to be on the same page.
Glad to hear that.
Recreation has, as always, a number of meetings scheduled. The next ARPAC meeting is this Wednesday, June 21st. The Irvington Woods Committee, basking in the glow of their garden party fundraiser, is meeting on Thursday, June 29, at 7:00 PM. As is a very special reorganization meeting of the FACE Committee this Thursday, June 22, 7:00 PM at the Senior Center. Irvington Day Camp starts on Monday, July 3. We're over 250 campers. Every year, it seems like we have more and more campers. Teenscape also, almost fully enrolled for two sessions, starts session one Monday, June 26. The Irvington Woods website is up and running, irvingtonwoods.org. Eileen Fish is having the company picnic at Sina Hudson on Wednesday, June 28, from noon to 4:00. The O'Hara Basketball Tournament, which is also one of our yearly things, well-attended both from a team and a viewer standpoint, they start on Monday, June 26. 16 teams participating, a boys' teams and a girls' teams. That's it.
So the Highway Department, message from Greg, they've been trimming around the traffic signs throughout the village and adding traffic signs, repairing a sinkhole on West Clinton. They assisted their Wreckin' Park Department with a baseball picnic, and assisted the Water and Sewer Department with a broken sewer pipe that was on.
and sewer department with a broken sewer pipe that was on West Clinton. They're also using the backhaul machine, cleaning the catch basins and doing line and crosswalk painting. And the water department has been reading water meters as usual, spring maintenance of water facilities, repaired the broken sewer pipe on West Clinton, that was near Ardsley Terrace. The theater commission doesn't meet in the summer, but I would shout out to Beth Ryan, she's one of the theater commissioners, who spent a long day on Sunday out on Main Street talking about the theater and encouraging people to be familiar with the theater and taking folks up there. I haven't been back in touch with the farmers market except to coordinate with them, and I, I know they added the kids yoga last, yesterday as well, so they're still having there Sunday morning. And of course, the Historic District Committee, you've heard from, so that's my report.
Question for you, Larry, is the rec. department still accepting donations for camp scholarships?
They are always accepting donations for camps.
You just walk in there and write a check or send it? Okay, all good. Regarding the schools, on July 11th, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, there will be election for the two newly approved seats on the school board to increase the total number of members of the school board from five to seven, so there are four contenders for those two seats. Polls will be open all day, please vote. The only other thing I have to report is, it really goes back to our prior discussion that the Green Policy Task Force has come to a work session and will be very actively involved with helping to educate people regarding the environmental, the new leaf blower law and other, trying to make Irvington greener. I think just one thing we need to note is that that is our committee, we've made that very clear, that is the board appointing committee. So while the Irvington activists, we want them involved as well, I think we ought not to blur the distinction between those two groups. Is it?
Great. All I'll say is, also, my son is starting Teenscape camp today, so that should be fun.
How did he get so old?
I don't know.
It's just you get younger.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Balder, doesn't really, correlation's weird.
Your son's getting bald.
Village administrators report, full head hair.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry.
You have a full head hair.
Yeah.
Why, how come you skipped Mary Ann?
Because.
He goes, he goes.
Oh, okay.
So that's what the order is.
Okay.
So last week, the mayor and I both attended a meeting at the county offices, well, county center, related to Shared Services Initiative, and there were many other elected officials there. Fortunately, the conversation stayed on point and.
It was two hours, only about an hour and a half.
Yeah.
Two hours if you include the half hour.
Milling around, yeah, so.
Coffee was ice cold, though.
Yeah, it didn't take long for it to get cold.
Astro cutbacks.
No sternum?
No.
So it was a productive meeting. We'll see, we'll see where it goes, there's a lot to be done before the beginning of August. I think one of the staff members in, for the county executive referred to it as the vacation-killing legislation. So anyway, a lot to be done over the summer.
Could then do it again next year.
Well, we, possibly, yeah. We did our part, though, we submitted a joint series of suggestions from the River towns, all seven of us, including Sleepy Hollow, put in a joint letter and it was highlighted at the meeting and, you know, the ball was good.
There's some very specific things discussed as well, like, but.
And other places had other suggestions, like the other parts of the county had?
Sharon Sewers was a big one.
Yeah, but, you know, everyone, it depends on where you're from. From the northern part of the county, you're worried about watershed and septics and sewers and so there's lots of suggestions from lots of different parts of the county, so.
I mean, with everyone from, you know, Yonkers to North Allen there, so it's a very diverse group of people.
Needs.
Was there any discussion at all, I mean, probably not at this meeting, but was there any, has there been any recent follow-ups on the margins that you know of?
I haven't heard any conversations, so.
Not like six weeks or so, at least a month, right? There was like a flurry of activity about six weeks ago.
Because it was something, I thought there was some kind of a meeting or a status report or a deadline or something coming up. Is anyone in the village plugged into that process at all, like through the?
I think I get all, I think I'm on all the emails, but I haven't seen anything in a while.
Village officials group or whatever?
I have heard enough. I thought there was state legislation which people were pushing for the adoption of, but I don't know.
Right, that was the last one.
Yeah, so, I don't know what the status is.
Paul Satter, Larry?
Yes.
Village clerk treasurer's report.
Nothing further from, but for tonight was good enough.
Village attorney's report.
I may be, except to tell the board I'd like to talk to you for a few minutes after the meeting.
Okay.
There's a meeting tomorrow, that's just for us.
That's right.
Conference of planning committees, yep, yeah.
Public comment? Review of action items?
So there was, there was one main action item and that had to do with notifying the ZBA of the appeals law, which I just did.
Correct.
And there's a, there's a broader list of things associated with the Historic District adoption and the notifications and all that. I'm not going to outline all that, but it's in the, it's in your resolution, obviously, but there's a whole series of follow-ups on that, but that's it.
Is there any way you could maybe check in with some of the other, I don't know how the structure was, was it the mayor of?
Yonkers.
Yonkers's lead?
Yes, I can check it out in email.
I'd just like to make sure that we can do what we can do to help in the process because I heard there was some discouraging word about the.
The bill in Albany. So that's the last thing I have was from June 7th, and it was about the calling your state senator and telling her to sponsor the legislation.
Which I'm sure she will.
That was the last I heard.
All right, well.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, can I have a second?
Second.[1798.32]